Have to get close? Okay. Hi, everybody. Thank everybody for coming. This is actually fantastic. My name is John Harris. I'm co-chair of Climate Action Brookline. Closer, even closer. That's better? Okay, wow. Okay. My name's John Harris, co-chair of Climate Action Brookline. Yes? Okay. And Climate Action Brookline, one of two organizations, okay, sponsoring this event. The other is Biking Brookline. And I just want to point out David Krupp, founding member of Biking Brookline on the other end of the area over there. This is one of the events in our Climate Spring, which CAB is kind of coordinating. Started last week, I guess, and is going through most of the month of May. Several kind of environment-related events, each of which we are doing in kind of cosponsorship with one other organization in town. A whole bunch of mothers out front has got events. Gee, of course, I'm drawing a blank. Who else? Greenspace Alliance has got events and other organizations as well. So, okay. Basically, what we are going to do today, let's see. Oh, yeah. A little bit more introduction to CAB, just super quickly. For anybody who doesn't know about CAB, Climate Action Brookline, CAB is an open-admission, citizen advocacy group dealing with climate change issues. We would love to have everybody who wants join, and we would like to have you work on your priority climate change or environmental issue through that, okay? We don't want anybody to feel disappointed that CAB's doing other stuff, but this is something else that I care about. So CAB is a fantastic way to meet like-minded people and to get like-minded people either working on your project, or maybe you like somebody else's project, you join with them, okay? This is our regular meeting time. CAB meets the second Monday of each month, 7:00 PM, usually on the first floor, okay? And we would love to have any and all folks attend, okay? So, yeah, three watchwords of Climate Action Brookline, just super quick. First of all, we deal with climate issues and, more generally, environmental issues. Number two, Brookline, we are focused on things that people can do at this town level or at the personal level. There are other organizations that work at the state or national level, and that's fantastic, but we want to be sure there's a lot happening here in town. And then the final word is action. Folks, don't just come to CAB meetings and just kind of twiddle their thumbs afterwards. We want everybody to get very involved because we all know the urgency of the climate change question. It used to be 2050 that everybody talked about, right? And that's what Paris talked about. And that's the official position of the town. We signed Paris. But more lately, folks are talking 2030. And that's just 11 years away for massive changes in society, which we will be talking about today, getting our candidates' ideas. Why the combination of CAB and then Biking Brookline? The reason for that is that 40% of Massachusetts greenhouse gas emissions come from the transportation sector, okay? It's the single largest sector of emissions that's been identified. And I suspect Brookline is either at the 40% or maybe even a little higher than that. So, basically, obviously, we want to get people away from fossil fuels. And when we can, my personal thing, I'd love to get people away from personal automobiles, unless you super need them for that particular trip. And so Complete Streets, which is, long story short, what Complete Streets is, it's an effort to make the streets completely safe for every kind of user of our streets, focusing on the most vulnerable users. That means pedestrians. It means people in wheelchairs, bicyclists, the scooter, the new scooter people, whatever, kids on their tricycles, et cetera, et cetera. So, basically, that's where Biking Brookline comes in. Let's see. What we're going to do, we're going to start with opening questions, and the questions will be up to six minutes each, okay? We've got our timekeeper there. And Alan wants you to show up a sign. Sorry, everybody knows who you are. Yep. Smack in the center. So pay close attention, okay? Because we don't want to be here all evening, kind of thing.
Got it.
And then we'll go into questions. And the answers for the questions, we'll give you up to two minutes each. And there's been some debate whether we should allow rejoinders or whatever on questions. We'll see how the time goes. And then finally, we will end with final remarks. You can talk about anything that hasn't been covered up till then. Again, up to three minutes each. And again, for each category, you don't have to take your entire time, right? Okay? You can take shorter if you want. So by, yes?
In case you can't see the numbers, important ones, 30 seconds is yellow. And the red one, John comes up and gets you.
Yeah, that's right. After the red one, you get the hook. So.
I'll do my best to follow traffic regulations.
There you go. There you go. Okay. So by random choice, just 10 minutes ago, the order of introductory speakers will be Isaac, and then Raul, and then Richard. So Isaac, six minutes, please.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. This is a wonderful crowd. And I want to thank John Harris and David Krupp, who just had a wonderful introduction to their organizations. You're doing really important work.
Isaac, I forgot to say one thing, which is for questions, there are two people handing out question cards. There is David Krupp on that side and Nancy Clark on this side. So Nancy, David's got the pile of cards. So write your questions down. The reason we're doing cards, we want to be sure, we don't just want to call on people and end up everybody talking about the same topic. We want to cover a whole bunch of rampant topics. So write down your questions and hand them back to either David or Nancy, okay? Yep. David, you start on that side, and Nancy, you can start on this side, and it'll all be good. So Isaac, I'm sorry. We won't take that out of your time.
No worries. And I'm glad you mentioned the questions, because I hope to not use all six minutes, because I'd like to get to your questions as quickly as possible. So a little bit about me. I'm Isaac Silberberg. I'm a Brookline Schools graduate and a current town meeting member and member of the Green Caucus, running for the select board. Brookline has a really long history, and I've certainly seen it in my lifetime of being active on climate and on Complete Streets. So I've benefited from a lot of the early actions a town meeting has taken on climate this century. The gardens, community gardens, came to the elementary schools while I was still in them. And I also benefited from a lot of the bicycle infrastructure that was being put in as I was in the high school. It definitely helped me get around a lot stiffer, and it contributed to Brookline being a place where I actually didn't need to get a driver's license until I went to college. So that, I think, that just speaks volumes to the power that we can have in Brookline to really shape the next generation and what we do to work towards climate and also towards safety. So personally, as a member of Town Meeting, I was, I think several of us up here were part of the group that pushed for the new school construction that's going to the voters this May to contain no fossil fuel systems in the building. I've also voted in favor of Town Meeting warrant articles banning the use, single-use plastics. And in terms of goals for the town, I really do want us to get to net zero aggressively and quickly. It's really admirable that we have a goal of 80% net carbon reductions compared to our 1990 levels by 2050, but I would like to see Brookline do more. And I think we've seen that there's an appetite among Town Meeting members, among our appointed and other elected leadership, and also just among the residents of Brookline for aggressive action on climate, because we want to leave the planet and our community better to those who come after us than we found it ourselves. In terms of Complete Streets, I mentioned I grew up in Brookline and biking all around. Some of my first memories of being involved in any level of government at all were actually around initiatives like Complete Streets. So I grew up on Walnut Street, and some of you in the audience might remember, when Warren Street and Walnut Street didn't have a crosswalk, and it didn't have a sidewalk at the intersection right there. My first recollection of government ever was actually being at a Transportation Board meeting, talking about why we needed that crossing. And I'm really proud now to be part of the Safe Roots to Schools program, which is an important measure that as we approach development and construction projects and improvements around town, we make sure that we do all of these things in a coordinated way, whether that's putting in targeted traffic and active transportation improvements around school construction, or whether that's making sure that infrastructure designed for cyclists and electric vehicles, for instance, maybe along Beacon Street, don't butt heads. Making sure that we're being really proactive and attentive to those things is really, really important to me. So I am happy to talk until I'm blue in the face about a whole lot of issues around climate and Complete Streets. But the thing I'm really excited to do is to answer all of your questions and to remain here afterwards and talk to any of you that are still here. So with that, thank you for coming out tonight, and I'm looking forward to this evening.
Raul Fernandez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Raul Fernandez, and I'm running for select board. You know, I wanted to start first by telling you a little bit about myself. I'm an associate dean over at Boston University, an associate dean for equity, diversity, and inclusion, as well as a full-time faculty member there. I've been living in Brookline for just over seven years now, and that entire time, actually, without a car. I am a pedestrian. I actually walk to work every day. I use public transportation as well, and I think a lot about what it means to get around this city. As it relates to the climate, you know, I was thinking recently about, you know, the astrophysicist Carl Sagan and what he said in looking at that photo of the Earth from so far away, that really, that first photo of the Earth, and he called it this pale-blue dot. And he talked a lot about community, about the idea that on this pale-blue dot, every person who has ever lived has lived and raised families and worked on this pale-blue dot. And that, really, there's two things that we're trying to do here in this world. One is to self-actualize a little bit, to be our best selves, to raise families in the best way that we know how, and the other is to build community and to live in community. And a lot of, I think, what we're going to talk about tonight is about how do we live in community with one another, and how do we make sure that we do it in such a way that others who come after us, who live on this pale-blue dot, are also able to live together in community for years and years and centuries to come? So a little bit more about what I hope that we'll end up talking about tonight. You know, I hope that we will talk about a net-zero action plan, absolutely. I hope we'll talk about things like community solar and maybe even having a carbon fund. I hope we'll talk about green space preservation, which is really important to me, and I hope we'll talk about my plan to have a dog park somewhere in Brookline. Maybe important to some of you. You know, the idea that we can actually increase our community choice aggregation levels, right now we're about 39%, to move that to 100% so that we're using 100% renewable energies here. We'll talk about maybe these warrant articles that we have before us coming to the Maytown Meeting, three of which I support, around pedestrian-friendly lighting, around electrifying our fleet of vehicles that are here in the town, and also increasing the supply, again, of green electricity that are available to us. And yes, as Isaac said, I hope we'll talk about this Complete Streets approach. And I think of it as just that, as an approach. It really is about how we communicate with one another, again, living in community, how we talk to one another about the different ways that we get around in this city, and making sure that we have an approach that is equitable and that works for everyone. I will say that there are folks in this town and around this town who are transit-dependent. And for them, it is not, there is no option for them, whether or not they're in a car or whether or not they're getting around in other ways. And so as we start to think about transit getting around and as it intersects with the climate, that this really is an equity issue for many people. Thinking about how to get around this town is an equity issue. And one of the things that I'm talking about, I'll be talking about in every single forum that's here, is about the process. Making sure that whatever processes we have where people are sharing their thoughts and views on how we should develop our town, thoughts and views on how we should make sure that we're challenging this climate crisis that's before us right now, that is an inclusive process and one that is forward-thinking. One that isn't just thinking about solving the problem immediately, right now, but also thinking about the problems that we'll have 20 and 40 years from now and even beyond there. So it really is about the process. So, you know, I look forward to this conversation with Isaac and Richard and with all of you. Thanks again to our hosts. Thanks to John and David and everyone else who's here for being with us. And once again, my name is Raul Fernandez. I'm running for select board, and I'd love to vote on Tuesday, May 7. Thank you.
All right. Richard Engel.
I am Richard Engel, and I'm running for select board, and I would appreciate your vote on May 7. Thank you to the Climate Action Brookline and Biking Brookline. It's good to be here for Climate Spring. I'd like to thank all of you for coming here tonight, and I look forward to our dialogue. The climate crisis, and it is a crisis, is the single most important issue of our lives. It's more important than any other single issue that we face. We must address it from a global perspective. We must address it from a local perspective. The International Panel on Climate Change Report issued last fall is unnerving and devastating. We have until 2030 to get our house in order or face a rise in temperature of several degrees that will forever alter our way of life. It is an unacceptable situation, and it demands action. If we take strong action and are unwavering in our commitment, we can save the coral reefs and the Arctic ice. We can also lessen food scarcity and the ravages of poverty all over the world. These are not small matters. We are seeing extreme weather events, fires, hurricanes, droughts, that suggest the carnage from climate change is already upon us. We need to prepare our infrastructure for what is to come. We now have to cut carbon pollution by 45% worldwide by 2030 and get to zero by 2050. It's a daunting task, but all of us must participate. In my home, we have opted up to 100% renewable energy. We traded in our gas-powered mower, hedge clippers, weed whacker, and chainsaw for electric. We compost our trash. We mulch our leaves. We recycle and reuse. We support environmental and animal rights, and we do not eat meat and have nuts since 1994. We have downsized from two vehicles to one. We've done much, but there's much more to do. Many of you who are leading on this issue recognize the climate crisis as a political problem, which, of course, it is. It is politics alone that created it, and politics alone that sustains it. Politics will ultimately decide whether we are successful in dodging the worst effects of the climate crisis. It is for this reason that I'm an enthusiastic supporter of the Green New Deal, which was introduced to Congress by Massachusetts Senator Ed Markey and Congresswoman Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez of New York. With leadership like that, we have a chance. The proposal calls for the federal government to wean the United States from fossil fuels and curb planet-warming greenhouse gas emissions across the country. It also aims to guarantee new high-paying jobs in clean energy industries. The Green New Deal calls on the federal government dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions, create high-paying jobs, ensure that clean air, clean water, and healthy food are basic human rights, and end all forms of oppression. To achieve these goals, the plan calls for the launch of a 10-year mobilization to reduce carbon emissions in the U.S. It envisions sourcing 100% of the country's electricity from renewable and zero-emission power, digitizing the nation's power grid, upgrading every building in the country to be more energy-efficient, and overhauling the nation's transportation system by investing in electric vehicles and high-speed rail. To address social justice, the resolution says it is the duty of government to provide job training and new economic development, particularly to communities that currently rely on jobs in fossil fuel industries. It is certainly true that the Green New Deal will be expensive, but it would be much more expensive not to follow through. To that end, we must do everything we can here in Brookline to make sure that we think globally and act locally. We should not be doing anything here in our town that will put more vehicles on the road. We should not build when we can reuse. There is embedded energy and waste and resources in tearing down buildings and constructing new ones. Losing our tree canopy in any open space exacerbates climate change. Europe is way ahead of us on this. The city of Copenhagen has embarked on an effort to be carbon-neutral by 2025. It might be overly ambitious, but it is worthy of applause. Whether it is successful will depend largely on whether the city is able to reduce vehicle emissions, a dividing line between the city and the national government of Denmark. Brookline needs to flood-proof its buildings, an effort that is underway in Boston. The effects of the climate crisis will hit us at points throughout Brookline that risk going underwater. We cannot pretend that we are not at the center of this issue. We must be at the forefront of doing what we can to mitigate it. We must not pull any punches. We are looking at massive tax increases over the next few years. We need some of that money to get ahead on climate issues. Thank you.
All right. Thanks to everybody. Now, basically, if you keep having questions, our question card people are still roving around, so any additional questions, keep them coming. The first one to get us started, and up to two minutes each. How long? This is a combination of three different questions that have to deal with, how are we going to get to achieving greenhouse, zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050? What specific actions would you take to achieve 2030 climate goals? And then finally, how long do you think the town should wait before requiring 100% green electricity? And how should we handle concerns about those on limited income who might worry about their ability to pay? And why don't we start with Raul and then go alphabetical at this point?
Sure. You know, I really appreciated Richard's comments there, particularly around the Green New Deal and the ambition, the scale of it. You know, it really has inspired me and, I think, many others to think about the scale of our own ambitions here. Town Meeting and our town more collectively has really been a leader, I think, in this space around the environment, but we can and should do so much more. So while there is no one panacea, no one solution that'll get us to zero carbon emissions by 2050, never mind 2030, there are some things that we, again, can and should be doing. So with about a minute and a half left here, I'll do my best to talk about a few of them. One is really thinking about, I mentioned before in my opening remarks, a carbon fund and ensuring that developers and large property owners are actually reducing carbon consumption, reducing, sorry, energy consumption, and actually paying into a fund that helps the rest of us do things like, for instance, community solar, where we can partner together as residents and use the solar grid to power our homes. I appreciate Richard's comments also about the tree canopy and making sure that we continue to build out green spaces. And I think that any development that takes place in town, we should work to have those be LEED certified and also, 30 seconds, geez, and also make sure that green space is incorporated into any of those programs. In addition, the other things that we really need to start thinking about is how we, as a community, do development of our own properties in the town and as well as how we work with developers. If we're going to be a leader, if that is going to be part of our brand, I've heard a lot about schools being our brand, and I think that's the case. Green needs to be our brand. Addressing this climate crisis needs to be our brand as well. Thank you. I'll talk faster next time.
Too complicated for just two minutes.
It's a lot for two minutes. It's an ambitious question.
Another two minutes for each candidate? Four minutes for each candidate? Up to four minutes.
If I could, that'd be great. There are a couple of things that I did want to mention as well. One is around composting, and there's a real opportunity for us here to come together as a community. I went, yes, this weekend, actually, to the Youth Climate Adaptation Challenge that was hosted by one of our host organizations, Climate Action Brookline, and saw what the kids from Lincoln School were actually doing. And they were actually able to really move forward their entire school, including the upper and the lower grades in that school, around a composting program in the Lincoln School. I encourage you to, if you can, see the work that they're doing. I certainly recommended them for a citation after seeing the work that they did. This is something that we, as a community, have to really come together around the issue of composting and anything else that will move us forward in a really meaningful way. There needs to be more conversation about this, more community dialogues about this, and I look forward to being part of those dialogues. Thank you.
So Richard, next, I guess.
Okay. I think one of the things we can do right away is provide 100% of the town's electricity from renewable resources. This is something the advisory committee approved last week, and municipal only counts for 3% of town electricity. We could up the percentage of the base renewable energy provided by Eversource on the Brookline Green CCE program to as high as possible. That would be the biggest impact that we could do as a town to get all residential and commercial accounts up to 100% green. There's obviously a cost factor. Put solar on all municipal roofs in Brookline. Get all Brookline town vehicles to transition to an all-electric fleet as soon as possible as per the warrant article that we're going to see in May. And again, the advisory committee approved this, so, last week. We should be doing curbside composting. It's happening all over California, a lot of other places. We need to support this. How about bicycle safety? Let's ban cellphone use while driving in Brookline. Ban it outright. I'm pretty sure texting is already banned, but there should be steeper penalties. And let's just have more bike lanes in a general sense, something that I want to talk about in more detail later. As far as people on limited income, if we have a commitment to aging in place, which I hope we do in economic diversity, then that demands that we help people with limited income cope with the costs of the many ambitious things that we want to do. And hopefully, we're going to make that effort and do those things, because I believe that aging in place is kind of the central issue of our community. Kind of jumping off from what Raul just said, yeah, I hear too that education is our brand, and I disagree, because I think our brand is quality of life, and everything flows from that. The reason that we have a great education system in this community is because we have a great community, a great quality of life. Without it, we wouldn't have that education system.
And Isaac, please.
Certainly. So I guess first thing, I want to thank you, Richard, for bringing up, you know, making sure that we're going to be tackling this issue in a way that folks from all walks of life can still afford Brookline and also can afford to make the difference that they know is so important. So there are several things to look at about how we can reduce our carbon emissions and get to net zero. We can look at things that are kind of one time or kind of only happen once, and we can look at things that are more ongoing. So in the bucket of things that only happen once, development is actually a really large player here when it comes to carbon emissions. Concrete pouring, for instance, releases a large amount of CO2 into the atmosphere. And so using a strategy like, for instance, a carbon fund would be really useful, especially in working with developers, to make sure that as they're pursuing projects, we are receiving money as a town that we can put towards either offsetting those carbon emissions and ideally also undertaking improvements with things like the tree canopy, making sure that surfaces are porous, so sidewalks and parking spaces are porous to allow water to actually get back into the ecosystem. Things like that are really important, especially when it comes to resiliency, which is also part of this. We need to work as hard as we can to make sure that we reduce our carbon emissions, but we also have to prepare for the what-if the rest of the world doesn't also move at this speed. And even if the world does move at this speed, what if that's not enough? So things like porous surfaces, things like preparing our buildings for floods are going to be really important, and we need to make sure that things that are under our control in zoning are taken care of, and where it's not possible, that we're lobbying the state as effectively as we can, whether that's through our wonderful delegation on climate issues from Brookline, or whether that's through specific home rule petitions that we're going to have to create. There's also the issue of ongoing emissions, and I think that conversation needs to start with transportation, which is the largest source of emissions in Massachusetts. So when it comes to transportation, and this is where Complete Streets is so important, not everyone is going to be able to drive, sorry, not everyone is going to be able to cut back on their driving in the same way that we would like them to. And so what we need to do is we need to make things like mass transit, and we need to make things like active transportation, whether that's a scooter or a bicycle, as friendly as possible for everyone who can't take that option. So I'm committed to doing that. And when it comes to things like community solar or making sure that the town's vehicle fleets are updated, those are things that I support. But those are things that we're going to have to think about in a really targeted, coordinated way. For instance, limiting reactant many times on whether we can put in active transportation infrastructure is the size of our emergency response vehicles. So working in coordination with the departments to make sure that, you know, our fire engines can still move down our streets. can still move down our streets and if we, that means we need to buy special fire engines in the future in order to do that and move towards a lot of the goals that we want to do, that's something that we need to do. It also means that we might have to make some difficult choices when it, and have some difficult conversations when it comes to things like historic preservation districts, which often have jurisdiction over what the outside of a building looks like, particularly when it comes to their roofs and external appearances. If we want to put solar panels on the roof, that might be something that we have to talk about. And so it's not all things that we can just dictate from the select board, but those are conversations of persuasion and open dialogue that I'm committed to fostering as part of the board.
Thank you. Okay, next question. We're going to begin to talk about bicycles and complete streets. Do you, and I'm going to combine a few questions, but trust me, I think they'll be a little more unified at this point. Okay, we'll start with two, yeah. Do you see safe bicycling infrastructure as primarily a benefit to people who bicycle or as a benefit to the whole community? And related, last year saw a divisive fight about Babcock Street with regards to protected bicycle lanes. What will you do as a member of the select board to change the conversation from us versus them, bicyclists versus cars, to the realization that complete streets benefit everyone? And lastly, same topic. A poll, I think in Cambridge, public opinion poll, found residents support installation of protected bike lanes by over two to one. So, bike lanes. And who was first last time? I think, was it Raul?
That was me, yeah.
So Richard first, please.
The three parameters of the question one more time.
Yeah, let's see.
Bikes, Babcock.
Not us versus them.
Yep.
Let's see, safe bicycling infrastructure, who does it benefit? And finally, protected bike paths. So the question definitely related to bicycles in particular.
And you said there was a survey on the protected bike paths?
Survey in Cambridge found that residents support installation of protected bike lanes by over two to one.
I don't blame them. I, I live in South Brookline and I do take my bike into Boston for work and it's, it's a horror show, let me tell you. A lot of people wouldn't do it, but when the weather's better, I give a lot of credit to the people who do it on a day like this, I never would. But when the weather's better, I do it, which means I have to come up Hammond Street, which is frightening, cut out to Woodland Road, which is a little less frightening, go to Heath Street, which is an old carriage road, that's horrible, and take that out to Route 9. And that's always fun. And then I ride on Route 9 for about two miles. Or sometimes I say, no, I think I'm going to hedge my bet with Beacon Street today. So I take Hammond Street all the way up, cut through the heights there by Boston College, cut down to Cleveland Circle and take it in through Beacon Street. And one of the things I've noticed as I've done this over the years is that it's safer in Boston than it is in Brookline. And Tom Manino has a lot to do with that. I give our bicycle advisory committee great credit for the work they've done, but in a general sense, what we're doing here is slower than what Boston has done and that's, that's unfortunate. So I'm very much concerned with bicycle safety and I don't think everyone has to be a maniac like me in order to ride a bike into Boston. As far as Babcock and the us versus them, that's probably one of the more difficult issues that the town has faced and I think we have to do more to protect parking for the people who need it, then it would be easier to get dedicated bike lanes on streets like Babcock. And as far as bike paths being favored two to one, it's, you know, obviously, I'm surprised it's not 10 to one.
Let's see. Oh, perfect timing. Wow, fantastic. So we're doing alphabetical, so next, Isaac, please.
So to, to answer your first question, bike lanes, well-designed bike lanes absolutely serve the entire community by serving cyclists. Cyclists having a better bike lane means they're less likely to ride on the sidewalk, they're less likely to, they're less likely to impede traffic for folks that really care about that. And the more people that ride bikes, the less traffic there is for the folks that don't have the ability or means to actually get around on a bike. So I, I see this as a symbiosis that absolutely works together. And so that brings us to Babcock Street. My understanding of Babcock Street is that this was a particularly difficult decision, especially regarding the physical limitations of some residents on that street who greatly, who greatly valued and relied on the parking that they had in front of their buildings for a very long time. I do think that the, the disability community in particular is a group that we have to keep in mind as we're thinking about bicycle infrastructure, an infrastructure of any kind, to make sure that everyone is still included. That being said, I would have personally liked to have seen more robust, two-directional bicycle infrastructure on Babcock Street, especially given the development that's going to be happening just past BU and hopefully West Station sooner than 2040, please MBTA? Because that's going to become a major thoroughfare. And so whether you want to bike all the way, whether you just want to bike around our commercial centers, you want to bike from South Brookline all the way into Boston, or whether you just want to bike to the nearest T station and get on the green line in the morning, it absolutely does not surprise me that residents support protected bike lanes. I've seen the protected bike lanes on Vassar Street in Western Avenue, Cambridge, have huge wonderful effects. And here in Brookline, I've seen the things on Park Street and also on Dudley get used tremendously. I think it's wonderful.
Raul, please.
Sure, I don't know that you're going to fill out a daylight between the three candidates here. You know, I'll say this is, this is a tremendously important issue, you know, whether or not it's a, it's a benefit to some or a benefit for all, I agree with the candidates here, especially Isaac, who sort of mentioned this idea of if we provide the right infrastructure, then, you know, I'm all about incentivizing the kind of behavior that we want. And if we want, you know, more bikes on the road and less cars on the road, the way to do that is to actually provide protected bike lanes so that people feel safe out on the road. I personally, one of the reasons I don't bike is because I don't feel safe out there. I wasn't cycling my entire life and so I don't consider myself, I would be a novice at best. And I wouldn't feel safe just jumping into a bike lane in the, in the town of Brookline right now. And I'll also tell you, just, this is very personal for me too. People on my team don't even know this. I'll tell the story once and I hope never tell it again, but, you know, I was at Boston University, one of, one of our students right in front of me was, was hit and killed by a truck and was there with him as he died. This, this should never happen. We need to have a vision zero approach to this in and around Brookline. Brookline is not alone, we are connected to the towns that are around us. And as other towns, as Richard said, as other towns are, are, are scaling up their infrastructure, we need to be right there with them, if not ahead of them. Right now, we are behind. People that are taking to, to our roads as cyclists need to be protected and we need to take steps to protect them. Thank you.
Fantastic. By the way, the questions are fantastic, everybody. Thanks, everybody. A different topic, I guess, altogether. Two related questions. Brookline and 14 metro Boston communities have set a goal of 185,000 additional housing units by 2030, that is 11 years from now. We will need, so let's see, so how do we meet the housing needs yet aim for net zero? And also, by the way, the town will need more classroom space. And related, it's easy in a town like Brookline, let's see, tough handwriting there, but how do you feel about the related issue of overdevelopment in town as witnessed by the influx of 40B buildings? Something about more hotels such as on Route 9, variances in special permits to zoning laws? The question is overdevelopment in Brookline? And, and housing, you know, pressing future housing needs?
Am I going first on this one?
So first, let's see, I think it's you, Isaac, right?
Yeah. Okay, so I would love to have more than two minutes to talk about this, not that I'm asking you for it right now, but if you want to talk to me more about this afterwards, please come, because I love talking about this kind of stuff. I want to make a really clear distinction from overdevelopment that people talk about and the 40Bs that we see going up in town. 40Bs aren't, 40Bs aren't necessarily an example of overdevelopment. 40Bs are an example of development that we don't have any say in. And I think that's really different. When you look at Brookline, there are a lot of parts, there are a lot of parts of Brookline that are dense, but people absolutely cherish and love the scale of. We're in one right now. Brookline Village is incredibly dense, incredibly efficient when it comes to generating tax money for the town and it's transit-oriented. So we can absolutely be all of those things and add housing capacity without, you know, without having these projects that often feel like they're just imposed on a community. So to that end, I would love to, we talked about 40B, I would love to really closely examine what it would take to enter the 40R process in Massachusetts. So in Massachusetts, the 40R process means that if you proactively zone for development that includes housing offered at affordable rates, then you, the town actually becomes eligible for increased aid if school enrollment goes up. So that seems like a win-win to me. And then when we're actually proactive about this, we can think about which areas of town actually have the transportation infrastructure with type 10s rolling out on the green line in a couple of years to actually handle an increase in population? Where does it make sense for us to be adding? And where are some small and local business areas that could actually use an influx of more residents? Maybe there's a neighborhood that if it had 100 more residents in that larger neighborhood, a grocery store in that neighborhood could be viable, another bar or restaurant could be viable. These are questions that we should be thinking about and proactively moving towards because we can maintain our sense of community while still welcoming more people here.
Raul, please.
Sure. You know, I'd love to use this as an opportunity to talk a bit about environmental justice and how some of the effects of climate change disproportionately impact people in our, in our country and especially thinking in terms of this housing question about, around low-income people. But also that our solutions, our green solutions can also disproportionately impact people in our town. And I'm talking about, again, low-income people in the town. And so as we start to think about the need for more housing, I think a lot around affordable housing, as, as Isaac rightly points out, you know, if we get to 10% threshold of, of affordable housing in town, then we can control our destiny a bit more as it relates to development. And that development should be green and as green as possible. And what we need to make sure that we're doing is that we provide opportunities for people to be able to afford in these places that we're building. And we need to make sure that as we're thinking about what kind of transportation modes we're prioritizing and where we're putting our funding, that we make sure we're thinking about low-income people in our town as much as we're thinking about ourselves as well. So I encourage that, us to include that as part of our conversations as your groups are meeting and thinking about potential solutions to the problems that we face, the real serious problems that we face, thinking about what that means for seniors, what that means for others who are also low-income within the town. You know, one of the things that I will prioritize on the board is before we make any policy decision, is to think about how will this decision disproportionately impact? And then we go through the list and we think about all the people, those who are in the room and those who are also not in the room and making sure that any policy proposals we come up with around housing or otherwise consider that. Thank you.
Richard.
Obviously, 40B is, is a very unfortunate affliction for the community and it has hurt us in many ways and continues to. And, and one of the, the things that's most unfortunate about it is it forces us to build things that we don't want at a time when new building construction is, is obviously environmentally devastating and doesn't help us reach our goals fighting the climate crisis. I'm a believer that we'd be better off as a community if we offered developers real incentives to build honest affordable housing in this community instead of the fake affordable housing that is 40B. Because that affordable housing is really not something that a lot of people can afford. I see a neighborhood at the top of my street, Hammond and Heath, that's one of the last true affordable housing areas in this community. And I would hate to see, see us lose that, lose those buildings, those triple deckers, those duplexes and have them torn down and have 40B developments built or luxury housing. We ought to push 55-plus housing, there's less impact on community services and with an eye on seniors and low-income people. And also housing for our town employees so that they can live here, hopefully stay here and so that our longtime residents can stay here if they have to downsize as well.
Was that all three? I think, I think, right, okay. Changing subjects altogether. What is your opinion on electric buses in which the energy used for braking can recharge the battery? I believe they've existed for a number of years. And related, it's widely recognized better public transportation must be part of a more sustainable future. Other communities in metro Boston are putting in place dedicated bus lanes to improve bus service, which is an equity issue also. What are your thoughts about dedicated rush hour bus lanes replacing car parking for the Route 66 butts, which carries thousands per day? So buses, dedicated bus lanes and electric buses? And I forget where we're at in the rotation.
I think I begin now.
Raul first?
Yeah. Yes, yes, and yes. Let's do it. Let's at least begin the process of talking about what this might mean, you know, thinking, I, I also have, have taken the bus of the 57 as well as the 66. And, you know, sometimes you feel like you'd be better off walking than on the bus when, when, when traffic is heavy. I think that's something that we definitely need to consider, particularly down Harvard Street where the 66 goes. You know, being able to, during these rush hour times, as you said, take those offline for parking and allow the buses to get through. Again, once again, I want to mention what I said before, that this is an equity issue. There are people who are dependent on this mode of transportation, they have no other options to get to work and to wherever else they're going and we need to make sure that they're able to get there. Thank you.
Richard.
It reminds me of something that I thought of when I was working for the Transportation Department, which I did for four years in the Patrick administration. I often thought I could run a 10K from my house faster than taking the T into Boston. Electric buses obviously are a great idea and it's something we ought, ought to promote and, and be in favor of and dedicated bus lanes, I think, are a great idea. And have me thinking of another idea that I've had on and off, just because it was frustrating to work for this department and see that they really weren't concerned with overall basic service for people who are just trying to get from point A to point B in their daily lives. They were always talking about some new project, they were going to do a line expansion, whatever. It's not that those projects weren't worthwhile, but they were. But with limited funds, you had to kind of decide, are we going to make the service that we have good or are we going to have all these ambitious plans? My thought was, you know, you could take a look at the D-line and say, maybe that's a passable line, although for me, walking to Chestnut Hill, I never knew if I was going to get to work on time. But I will say that for people who take the C-line and especially the B-line, those are truly, truly terrible subway lines. And my proposal would be pave them over, turn them into dedicated bike lanes and then take the people who, who used them and put them onto buses in dedicated bus lanes. I think they'd get from point A to point B faster.
So Isaac, please.
So specifically on the regenerative braking on electrified MBTA buses, that, that sounds great. Unfortunately, I won't have direct control over the MBTA budget on the select board. Well, none of us would, but I would absolutely be an advocate for moving the MBA to, the MBTA forward in a whole host of ways on the board. Specifically, the question about the 66, I do think it's really important that our infrastructure is people-centric as opposed to vehicle-centric. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you see a bunch of single occupancy vehicles at times, just taking, you know, basically causing traffic for a bus that's packed to the gills, sometimes two or three of them in a row with people. That being said, I, I wholly support this in concept, I'm not sure exactly how it would work, so I'll be an emphatic yes, yes, yes to pilot programs and trying to figure out what that could look like. And when I, when I say pilot programs, I, I mean, you know, this is how Everett started, right? Everett laid out traffic cones one day and said, this is going to be a bus lane for a couple hours. It doesn't, they had no intention of going further than that until they saw what a success it was. So that's not anything, that, that's not, that's not a lukewarm endorsement, that's an emphatic yes and the honesty of saying, I have no idea, particularly on some sections of Harvard Street, how we're going to make that work long-term. I do- I do have concerns about making sure that folks who rely on some of those parts of infrastructure, particularly folks in the business community, would deal with a lot of traffic, particularly in the evenings. I know that's something that they've been very mindful of. And I think that when it comes to things like the C-line and the B-line, absolutely investing in transit signal prioritization is crucial. Because the only way that we're going to add housing and add people to our community in a green way is in a transit-friendly way.
All right. Thank you. Changing topics hugely once again. We're going to talk about buildings for a moment. Basically, I'm not sure folks know that earlier this year, the Select Board passed a climate goal of Brookline being a fossil-fuel-free community by the year 2050. So a part of that is are the buildings we all live in and shop in and work in in town. So the question is, how can the town help residents convert fossil-fuel heating systems in buildings to zero emissions? And I think Richard is first. Helping residents convert fossil-fuel heating systems in buildings to zero emissions.
There amazingly, given that this is Brookline, there aren't that many people who've opted up to 100%. We've done it, and I'm surprised how low the participation rate is. So a real education campaign about that, however that could be done, whether it's direct mail or in providing incentives of some kind, but or maybe some kind of contest where there would be an incentive there as well. But I think if we got people to opt up to 100%, we'd be doing something not only for the climate, but it would make us look better in the greater Boston community as well.
Isaac. Oh, is that, yeah, Isaac, please.
Sure. So I think the question was around retrofitting existing buildings, particularly residences that use fossil-fuel systems.
Well, you know, Brookline is a bedroom community, so yes, residences, but why not commercial buildings if you've got ideas on that that differ? Sure. But buildings, buildings, buildings. Yeah.
Sure. So I think that as a community, we need to be looking at all possible avenues about how we can require these things to be put in, particularly for new construction. And this is something where I think we need to work really closely with the state. There are wonderful programs at the state level for, for instance, replacing your light bulbs, looking at a lot of the other efficiency uses in your home. And I'm not personally aware of a state-level program that would do something like that for fossil-fuel systems inside of residences. But I would be really excited to approach the state government and encourage that Brookline be maybe the first or one of the first communities to partner with the state in figuring out what a program like that could look like. Absent of aid from the state, I think it's just a question of how do we incentivize, how do we incentivize folks to do this? Whether it's a requirement when an ownership change takes place on a property or a tax credit potentially for folks that make this change. There are a lot of potential avenues that we can go down, but I think that figuring out the right way to, one, incentivize the correct behavior, and, two, get the word out about those incentives are the things that we need to be doing. And when it comes to big things like this, sometimes that might mean going to other parties, whether that's a state or possibly even an NGO that wants to pilot a program like this and say, hey, one of the benefits of being out front here is we're happy to pilot it with you and figure out how it all works. So there are a lot of potential options on the table, but I think they all point in the same direction of where we want to go.
Yeah, and I'd agree with that. Yeah, thank you. I'd agree with that, and you talked before about sort of incentivizing behavior we'd like to see. This other point, I think, is a really important point. You know, we've seen this, we've been town meeting members, and we'll pass warrant articles and resolutions, and then where does it go? And oftentimes, we see that our municipality is not as good as we would like to see in terms of actually reaching out to residents and communicating with residents about the options and opportunities available to them. You know, we see this in the need to redevelop our website, to really think about how we communicate with residents, how we welcome new residents to our town, and making them aware of what it is that we're trying to do here as we start to think about things like our community choice aggregation and making sure people are aware of that program, but also how they can actually opt up to the 100% that Richard is talking about. We need to do such a better job. I mean, we, at this point, are relying on our great, wonderful nonprofit organizations and community organizations to promote these opportunities for us as a town. We have to make it part of our responsibility as a town to do that. And I would certainly do that as a Select Board member.
Richard, please.
I think that would be my second bite at the apple.
Oh, is that right? I'm getting it.
And I don't want one.
Sorry about that. Thank you for keeping me honest. Whatever. Okay, get ready. Get ready, guys. I hope you got your seatbelts on, because these questions are going to ask about the Baldwin School. Okay? So coming at it from a couple of different directions. Basically, comment on the choice of the Baldwin School site in light of smart growth versus, I guess, complete streets. Okay? That's one. Here's the other. What do you know about embodied carbon versus operating carbon with regard to buildings? And how does this inform your opinion about, well, the two proposed K-8 schools, but you can focus on Baldwin on that if you want. And then related to that, directly related, amplifying on the second question. Okay. Someone has calculated the carbon footprint of basically an estimated 180 vehicles traveling an extra three to six miles each day to drop off and pick up kids each day for school as opposed to the Baldwin School in particular being able to use thermal energy. How does the Baldwin's ability to use thermal energy compare to the 120 tons of CO2 that this person estimates will come from driving kids to and from the Baldwin School? And I forget who goes first.
Is it me?
The other guy.
Wonderful. All right.
Baldwin, Baldwin. Yep, can't get away from it.
So I'm a supporter of the Baldwin School. I was one of the field leads for the Yes for Brookline campaign last year for the high school expansion. I'm still involved with the leadership team of this year's Yes for Brookline campaign. That's something that I absolutely stand for. I, to be honest, so I'll address the complete streets question really, really quickly. We, in the Transportation Department, we actually have a long list of streetscape improvements that are going to be occurring around both school projects that are being built, but particularly at Baldwin. There's a concern about folks cutting through, particularly on Woodland Road or on Heath Street, very quickly. And there's a concern that right now, there aren't ADA-compliant sidewalks along the lengths of those streets. So this existed, as I mentioned, along Walnut Street and Warren Street when I was growing up and walking to the Lincoln School. So we have a commitment from the Transportation Department to actually put in ADA-compliant sidewalks along both of those streets, and we can certainly examine more active traffic calming and other pieces as part of a full complete streets package. Heath Street in particular can be challenging. It's actually the oldest street in town. Used to go all the way out to Buster. It was the Turnpike before Route 9 existed. So it's naturally narrow and can be difficult from a complete streets perspective. In terms of the carbon emissions piece, one, I don't know where that number comes from, and so I don't really know whether to take it at face value or refute it. But I will say that in general, I find that Brookline is sometimes full of contradictions of sorts. I think that if you look at the way that the district was going to be drawn, hopefully around the Baldwin School, it will hopefully be drawn in a way that even if a lot of people are driving to the school compared to our other schools, the district is actually drawn in a way so that we're not taking a bunch of children that currently walk to a school or use active transportation and instead drive. So if they're driving, they're already driving, and hopefully they're driving a shorter distance when going to the Baldwin School. So I guess I would challenge those assumptions and say that a lot of those numbers are yet to be determined.
Raul, please.
Sure. Like Isaac, I'm supporting the override, supporting the sighting of the Baldwin School, though I will say this. I've talked to a lot of residents who have felt, and this is important, that their voices were not heard throughout the process. And, you know, I, as someone who's sort of stood at that podium and said my piece and not gotten the result that I wanted, at least felt in many cases, like at least my voice was heard. And a group of residents around Baldwin have felt like the Select Board and others have not engaged them in a really appropriate way around the issues, the reasonable issues that they brought up. With that said, I think it is important that we build this school to relieve our overcrowding. If you have a better site than Baldwin, and I know some of you do, we could certainly talk about it. But right now, for right now, everything that I know and with the land that we have, I'm supporting the Baldwin site. You know, I will also say this, is that going forward, we're going to have to figure out how we think about things like development and a lot more around long-term development. We are in this position right now of this over-enrollment crisis that I have to imagine we could have better predicted. And we've got to start to think about, again, as I mentioned before, what this town will look like 10 and 20 years from now. And we need to start involving residents, just those of us who, you know, the Brookline 500, who are at every single thing and involved in town meeting and who are at all the hearings, but involving residents, the ones whose doors I knock on, who aren't as aware of the everyday issues that are happening in our governance, but are impacted by them nonetheless. And we have to really start to think about those people, incorporate them into our plans as well. Thanks.
Richard.
Baldwin is really the defining issue of our time here in Brookline. It's a defining issue in this election. And basically, we've been hit with a ballot question that is environmentally disastrous because building the Baldwin School is not carbon-neutral, and it's not anything close to being that. As far as complete streets go, you know, we could have dedicated bus lanes and traffic signal priority. But I think that trying to do that at that site is just on a carriage road. The fact of the matter is, people are going to be driven to that school no matter what you say, and they're going to be driven in vehicles that burn fossil fuels, and it's going to take the second most heavily traffic-jammed area in the town and make it even worse with people sitting there idling in their cars. It makes no sense to do it. As far as embodied carbon on the carbon footprint, we know that building a new building is the most environmentally destructive thing you can do and that the greenest square foot that you have is the one that you don't build on. The carbon footprint of embodied carbon of building materials has not received as much attention as it should. Embodied carbon represents the carbon emissions associated with the harvest, extraction, refinement, production, manufacturing of material, as well as transportation to the building site, and the end of the life cycle, demolition, repurposing, recycling, et cetera. And with a goal of reaching net zero emissions by 2050, that can only be achieved by addressing embodied carbon, especially as operating emissions are dramatically reduced. There will be lower carbon emissions from operating energy consumption as the grid decarbonizes through increased renewable-sourced electricity production and as mechanical equipment becomes more efficient.
Perfect. That was a tough one. This is actually, I think, a softball, which is, I would like protected bike lane on Beacon Street, a project sometimes referred to as the Bridle Path Restoration. Will this project come to fruition during your term? And if that's possible, what will you do to make it happen? Also, what can be done to make Beacon Street safe now for bicycling pending the development of a bridle path? And I think, Raul, I think you would be first.
Yeah. You know, I think one thing that we all have to be very clear about is this, is that this isn't an election for mayor. This is an election for one of five seats on a Select Board. And I think that all anyone on this up here can promise to you is that we are going to push for the things that you've heard us talking about today, whatever those things are, and that we're going to push for them, I mean, at least for myself, now I can start to speak for myself, vocally, vociferously, and that I, for one, have no problem being the sole vote that is in dissension from the other four that maybe are sitting on the board. And so you've heard me talk about the need for protected bike lanes and how personal it is for me. I think Beacon Street is an excellent location for protected bike lanes, and that's certainly something that I would push us to consider. I believe that's already being considered, but I'd certainly push us to consider it even further and faster. Being able to promise that that's going to happen in my first term is something that I'd be hesitant to do. But know that this matters to me, that it's important to me, and I'll continue to work with and meet with people who are cyclists and people who use other modes of transportation in the town to make sure that our streets are safe for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard.
I would do everything I can to make sure that bridle path happens. It's a great idea, and it'll make Beacon Street safe. But, you know, it's years away. So what do we do in the meantime? I see Boston, again, and other communities that have the protected bike lanes between the sidewalk and the parking spaces. And so why aren't we doing that in Brookline? I think we could do that all the way up Beacon Street, and we'd have a much safer mode of travel there. It's obviously not an easy thing. It's a congested and tight road, but I think we owe it to everybody in a complete streets mentality to do this.
Isaac?
So again, I kind of echo the statement around promises, given that we are just one of five. But I haven't seen many folks in town that really don't like this idea. So I'd be very committed to seeing this get done as quickly as possible on the board. So in terms of what can we do in the meantime, I think there are several options of things that we can do. There are pilots that we can possibly look at in terms of spacing out or dedicating parts of the street that maybe aren't really good dedicated cycle lanes now that possibly could be. I know that there'd been a proposal to maybe look at taking away some parking. The matter is that for a good chunk of Beacon Street right now, there does already exist some form of bicycle infrastructure or another, and the bridle path is really the goal to standardize it and make it safer and better for cyclists everywhere. So I'm not exactly sure what we would do in the meantime to make the infrastructure even better than it is. Not saying that there's not a gap that can be addressed there, because I'm certain there is. But at the top of my head, I can say that I haven't put a ton of thought into the incremental pieces that we might be able to take in the meantime, but I'd be happy to take suggestions and work really hard on it on the board.
Thank you. Again, a different subject altogether, this having to do with budgets and tax burdens. Three questions. What would you do to increase town funding for net zero? And just for folks info, what net zero means, it's a supplemental idea to complete streets. Net zero, the goal of net zero is that zero people will die from impacts with cars or trucks. Zero people. You have a...
We're talking vision zero?
I'm talking vision zero. This is net zero. I'm sorry. I got that one wrong. Anyway.
We've got zeros floating around. They're good.
Anyway, that useful piece of information. Anyway, what would you do to increase town funding for net zero? Related, how are the many environmentally-friendly ideas going to be funded? And finally, addressing the climate crisis in Brookline will take significant investment. Given this, doesn't it make sense to be careful and thoughtful to balance our town's spending, such as stepping back to reevaluate school-building projects with the advent of Newbury, with new projections, new, you know, student population projections, et cetera? So town funding, funding environmentally-friendly, including net zero, and balance town spending and evaluating carefully current projects and future projects. And I think, Raul, are you first, I believe?
It's Richard.
It's Richard.
It's all a blur to me. Okay, Richard first, please.
I kind of agree with, you know, what the town has said in its net zero report, that we need a commitment to fossil-fuel-free buildings, to design and construct fossil-fuel-free buildings on all-new construction and major renovations of municipal facilities to include achieving high-energy efficiency design and operation, generation, consumption, and storage of renewable energy, and achieving fossil-fuel-free operation by using... of renewable energy, and achieving fossil-fuel-free operation by using all electric systems. As far as how we're going to pay for all of this, and this is obviously the major question, we need to make smart decisions on what we spend money on. Does it make more sense to buy Newbury College and use that to alleviate overcrowding very soon, if not immediately? Or does it make sense to bond Baldwin School to run a deceptive yes campaign that fools people into thinking that this is an actual solution, when in fact, it's probably three years down the road in your best-case scenario and six years down the road in a worst-case scenario if the school is ever built? If the school is ever built. So let's save money and do a smart thing and use the money that we have to get ourselves ready for 2030, because it's coming, folks.
Isaac?
Sure. I'm happy to talk about the schools and a lot of questions related to the schools, but not in just the two minutes up here, also addressing something else. I'd be happy to stick around and talk with folks about that afterwards, and I mean that. The, look, we started studying where to put a new school before the iPhone was announced to the world. By the time we're done building a new school, kids could be dropped off in electric autonomous vehicles. Now, part of that is that it's taken a while for us to figure out where to put a site, in the sense that there is no perfect site, which is why you're seeing the multi-pronged approach that we're facing right now. And part of that is also that the world is moving faster than it ever has before. So when it comes to increasing our town funding for Vision Zero, when it comes to significant investments, it doesn't mean that we pull back on the core commitments that we have to our kids, that kids with special needs don't get taught in substandard spaces. Kids should not, our least crowded school, if you look at the macro sense, Heath, has middle schoolers that learn in a converted locker room every single day. We have middle schoolers that take turns sitting on the floor because their classroom doesn't have space for desks for all the students. If we actually want to teach them about why the climate is so important and protecting it is so important, we should make sure that they can actually pay attention and learn in a suitable learning environment. So that's what I have to say there. In terms of increasing our investment, absolutely. The proposals that we're talking about require increased investment, and that's one of the reasons why I'm really committed to making sure that we expand the tax base in Brookline, particularly through smart, targeted, commercial development, so that as a community, we can ease the burden on taxpayers. And in the meantime, we can pursue targeted tax relief towards individuals on low incomes and on fixed incomes that honestly are really proud of the schools in our community and the values that we share and our commitments to sustainability, but at the same time, know that this could be a really difficult decision for them to make financially. We need to support those folks however we can.
Raoul, please.
Sure. You know, I'll start by saying, you know, we in this town want and deserve excellent schools and well-paid educators and efficient and safe transit and beautiful, well-maintained parks, and yes, a dog park. And we have to find a way to pay for it, and that's the reality of it. We need to find a balance here. We need to think about, again, the long-term planning and development of this town, diversifying our commercial tax base, thinking about what will happen with the funds that are coming in from, we talk about the green economy, we can also talk about marijuana as the green economy, and what's going to come from these pot shops and where that funding is going to be going. Pretty soon, we're going to need to come up with a regulatory scheme for Airbnbs as well in this town. And again, that needs to be an inclusive process that takes into account all the concerns that people have about those. And one of the things that we really need to consider, which has come up before, is the idea of a land bank. And this would be taxing the sale of property, and the buyer would pay this tax, and that that funding would go into a land bank that would allow us to purchase property that we can decide what happens there. We could decide if a park should go there, and we could decide if a school should go there, and we could decide what kind of development should happen there. So I look forward to talking more about that in this and other forums, but the bottom line is, if we want all these things, we also, at the same time, have to be thinking about the bottom line and how we're going to pay for it all.
I think, is it you, Richard, I think? Or are we? Where are we at?
I think we're done.
We're done? Okay, good. We're not shying away from the difficult questions in town. Get ready for this one. Per capita, the denser parts of Brookline have a much smaller carbon footprint than the less-dense areas. The sprawl we have in South Brookline, I'm just reading, the sprawl we have in South Brookline is neither environmentally nor financially sustainable. Given the town's cost to maintain its infrastructure, what must we do over the long term and, but beginning now, to address this? And I honestly forget.
I think it's me first this time. So yeah, you're spot on. That's how density and economics and science works. Mazel tov. So what we need to do as a community, if we want to add more housing and development that is green, that's, what does that look like? That's dense. It's more efficient from an energy perspective. It needs to be transit-oriented so that folks that don't want to use a car, don't need to use a car on a day-to-day basis, don't have to, that probably looks mixed-use, which is more efficient from a tax collection perspective from the town, but also means that you don't have to travel as far to get to something like a grocery store. All of these things are absolutely true. When we talk about that, it doesn't mean that we need to punish the folks that have chosen to live in a less-dense part of town. If we're going to solve this problem on climate and reach net zero, we're only going to do it by working together. I really don't think that it's constructive to denize the folks that live in South Brookline just because they've chosen to live in a really beautiful, wonderful section of town that doesn't happen to be as dense. I don't think it's about being punitive and really getting at each other's throats about this. I think it's about figuring out where can we incentivize the kind of things that make sense for the future, and where can we come together as a community?
Raoul?
Sure. You know, I'm in favor of development that would take place in business districts and already bustling areas. You know, having met with small business owners, even including very recently, talking about the need to increase foot traffic in these areas, as you know, especially if you've come by my area over in Coolidge Corner, you see that a small business closes and either once you think, things happen, it's vacant for a very long time, or a bank opens, right? We've got your banking needs covered in Coolidge Corner, let me tell you. And so this, if we're going to develop, this is what we hear from small business owners all the time, is that we want some more developed in that area, things like hotels, I think the Waldorf Dirk Project, which we'll be discussing soon in town meeting, which has, which is mixed-use and does include hotels. Part of that actually brings in some much-needed revenues for the town and also some much-needed ongoing foot traffic for our businesses as well, and that's something we should think about. Now, if those who are in residential, very residential districts would like for us to consider development in those areas, please let us know, and we can talk about that as well. But I think it makes the most sense to build around our business districts and help support those small locally-owned businesses.
Richard?
I think the top of Hammond Street is a good example of, you know, five banks at the top of Hammond Street. Five banks, no coffee shop, no bar, no pot shop. I'd take them all. You know, I think there's lots of opportunity at Hammond and Heath Street, and we ought to do it. What I don't want to see, what I don't want to see, and what will happen if the Baldwin School comes in, what will happen is developers are going to buy those triple-deckers and those duplexes, they're going to rip them down, they're going to build luxury housing. That would be an absolute travesty, and we should not allow it to happen.
We're winding down at this point. Our timing is good, I think. Basically, focusing on residents and personal choices, I guess I'd say. Most of Brookline's carbon emissions come from Brookline residents. What approaches would you use to help Brookline residents adopt sustainable practices? Number one. Related? How can solar energy be maximized in town? And I guess I'm saying at this point, on, you know, single-family homes, apartment buildings, condos, et cetera. And then here, related to that, how will you reduce the confusion about what can and cannot be recycled? Again, the question is about... The questions are about personal choices of Brookline residents and providing incentives, et cetera, et cetera, to be more, make more sustainable choice. And once again, I've completely forgotten who comes next. Raoul, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Good job combining these questions here. You know, I think the answer, not surprisingly from an educator, is education, education, and more education. We need to communicate with each other more as a town, and we need to know each other more as a town. One of the best things for me about having gotten involved as a town meeting member is I used to walk around this town and not really know anyone except for the few friends that I had. And I have many friends. And, I promise. And now I'd be able to walk around this town and actually be able to wave to folks and see people in the places where I get a cup of coffee or drink or something like that has been great. I think we need to get many more people involved in what's happening in this town and much more aware of what it is that we're doing in this town. It really, I talk a lot about sort of kickstarting this virtuous cycle of civic engagement. We see, for instance, as an example, that we have 37,000 or so registered voters in town, a fraction of those come out to vote in May, the folks like you that come out to vote in May. And that it's not that those folks don't have issues, it's that they're not involved or engaged, and I think that we, as a town, haven't done enough to involve and engage them. And so we think about how to get people to adopt more sustainable practices. It's much easier to do that when we know one another. As we think about how we can encourage residents to consider solar as either 100% or part of the mix of their energy, we have to know people to be able to do that. And as we think about reducing this confusion about what can and cannot be recycled and the additional confusion that may come when we do town-wide composting, which we should do, it's going to be all about knowing each other and communicating with each other and even going door-to-door to talk about these issues with one another. I have one more thing to say about that, but I think I'll save it for the next question. Thank you.
Richard, please.
Very good points by Raoul, and it's been disappointing to me, two years in a row on the campaign trail, to find people who just have absolutely no conception of what's going on in this community. They're just completely disconnected. And I don't blame them for that. I've heard people in this community, in town government, say, "Well, you know, it's their responsibility to look at the website." No, it isn't. It isn't. It's our responsibility to reach out to them. And so we've got to do a better job reaching out to people, and that could be through direct mail, it could be through outreach from other town meeting members, but we've got to communicate, and too many things are being done in silos.
Isaac, please.
So I think that the answers before me are pretty reflective of how I would like to approach this as well. I think that when it comes to resident education, I think there are a whole lot of things that we need to be talking to folks about. Why is there an election in May? What in the world is a town meeting member? What are the 99 boards and commissions that we have in town, and why do they matter? How are they important? There's a lot of civic education that we, you know, that we need to do and can do as a community. You know, we don't, whether, there are some towns, there are some towns in Massachusetts and elsewhere that, for instance, have full-time communications departments, not only for kind of standard things that you might assume a communications director would do, but also folks work in graphics and they work on community outreach to make sure that when someone gets a flyer in the mail, for instance, that talks about, you know, talking about how they can buy into the 100% green electricity program, that flyer makes a lot of sense and is easy to read. So those are, those are things that, as a town, we often rely on residents to do because that's our form of government. And so I think that as a community, in terms of educating folks, there is the kind of person-by-person education that needs to be done, but I also would really like to take a look at what are some of the scalable things that we can do, because we have such a wealth of, we have such a wealth of talent, but also such a wealth of care and passion in Brookline. And so I'd like to see how we can harness that in order to make sure that folks do know what's going on, they do know who represents them, they do know what opportunities there are for them to get engaged. Because I think that the more people buy into, the more people buy into our process as a town and engage, the better community we become.
Thank you. This next one is, it's not even short answer, it's kind of fill-in-the-blank, and I suspect the questioner knows the answer to this. So anyone who has an idea, just chime in. What percentage of residents of Brookline do not own a personal car? Does any idea? Does the questioner, is this...
Yeah.
How many households do not own a personal car? That's fine.
Are there prizes?
Votes, I think.
Does the questioner know the answer? I don't know who the questioner was.
I'm very curious as to what it is. The experience that I, as I'm thinking about what the answer could possibly be, in my head, is thinking about, you know, where in town could I live and not need a car, which I think is a large part of the community. That, of course, depends on where you live and where you work, and maybe if you're bringing a car from where you lived previously. But I'm also thinking about, you know, what percentage of our high school students actually get a driver's license as soon as they can? And my, at least anecdotal, experience there would be not a lot. So I have no idea what the percentage is, but I'm just walking you through my thought process.
Again, does anybody else, or does the questioner know, or is just in this room or we're just clueless? It is definitely a question, a food for thought, so. Okay. Something I should have done before, and I just forgot, but I do want to introduce...
Are they going to tell us?
Does the questioner know?
Are we...
Come on!
Is this trivia rules up here? Can I ask for a hold of the phone?
That's right. Okay.
Like to phone a friend?
Okay. Homework assignment. Okay. Something I should have done before, and I just want to be sure we do it before we go to final remarks. And by the way, the order of final remarks would be Richard first, and then Isaac, and then Raoul, so we're all shaken up from the introductory, okay? And that is to introduce the political, some of the particularly notable or powerful or whatever, political leaders in town. And I'd like to start with the 800-pound gorilla who's very fashionably dressed this evening, our state representative, Mr. Tommy Batolo, in our presence. And honestly, moments ago, Neil Wozinski was here. He just took off. But anyway, you know, thanks to Neil. And by the way, it is because Neil, after many years, is not deciding to run for reelection to Select Board, that the single seat that our candidates are applying for is available, or even more easily available, I guess I'd say, whatever. So thanks to Neil. And we have, I know we have a candidate for constable here in Regina Fraley, so keep Regina in mind. And are there any other candidates for office?
Yeah, we've got David Pollack.
Deborah Brown, House of Representatives.
Yep.
Please don't forget the school committee chair.
Roger Blood. Is that who we're talking about? Oh, I'm sorry. No, David Pollack, you're right. Yes, school committee. I'm sorry.
I have a point, man.
Okay. Yep. Yes. And your name again, please?
Nina.
Okay, for constable. Anybody else running for reelection? So, okay. Now, final remarks, this will be three minutes each, up to three minutes each, I guess. Any topic that either, we haven't talked about, and we've talked about a lot, but anything we've missed, number one. Number two, any just kind of wrap-ups that you'd like to do. And again, Richard, Isaac, Raoul, right? Yeah. Richard first, please.
Before I start, Isaac's comments had me thinking, "I would love to see town elections in November in even-numbered years." I think that would be a great reform for this community. We had a 22% turnout last May, and that's with a tax ballot question, two tax ballot questions. That's deplorable. In November, when we had a US Senate race that was decided and a governor's race that was decided, and three ballot questions, 67% of people turned out. So it's really too bad that we have this low turnout. There were no climate change deniers up here tonight, and so that made it a little bit more difficult, I think, for all of us. It's clear that we all agree on a whole range of issues related to climate change, but the bundled question is one area where we do not. We've talked tonight about a total commitment to addressing the climate crisis. We know that it means we must walk the walk. the walk. The bundled question on the May 7 ballot is one that I am opposed to for several reasons, but primarily, I'm against it because it is an affront to fighting the climate crisis. Building Baldwin calls for our community to do things that are not in keeping with our green principles. Refuse, reduce, reuse, recycle. The greenest square foot is the one that is not built on. The energy used to demolish a building and then build new construction is a normus. It takes operating energy that is very large and that a lot of people don't understand, and we cannot net zero our way out of that predicament. So let's reuse instead. Let's retrofit existing buildings rather than building more. Let's not put more vehicles on the road and locate buildings in high-traffic areas inaccessible by public transportation that will result in even more traffic jams and more waste of fossil fuels. We all are looking forward to the day when all our vehicles will be electric, but that is far in the future and well beyond 2030, the year we need to be looking at in order to save the planet from the worst ravages of the climate crisis. It is time for environmentalists in our community to band together and admit that the bundled question is a false choice. Let's vote it down. Bring back Driscoll after 35 days for a revote, I'd vote in favor of it, and then use existing buildings to solve our immediate overcrowding needs. European cities are way ahead of us on this. What would the city of Copenhagen, which seeks to be carbon-neutral by 2025, do in this situation? We know the answer. They would not build a commuter school. It's time for us to be the change that we say that we are. Let's not fall for the false narrative that shrouds this issue in the public discussion. And to close, I would like to thank Climate Action Brookline and Biking Brookline for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I ask for your vote on May 7.
Sure. So I'm running for select board because I want Brookline to be an equitable, sustainable community of opportunity. And that community of opportunity encompasses four things that a lot of us interact with on a daily basis. That's our housing choices, that's our education system, those are our transportation options that we have on any given day, and that's also our commercial centers. And so all of those things are incredibly intertwined in our daily lives. And as we look forward, and we try to move sustainability efforts forward across all of those things, those two should be in an intertwined fashion. So I'm committed to being as proactive and aggressive as I can possibly be in addressing the climate crisis that we're facing, and also in building resiliency in case that whatever we do happens to not be enough. Now, are some, Brookline has traditionally been a leader in a lot of sustainability efforts, and there are some communities that have jumped out in front of us. I think this is the best kind of competition that we can possibly be having as a community, racing other communities around Massachusetts and also around the world to see who can get to carbon-neutral as quickly as possible. Some examples of that are just right next door in Newton, which has signed an agreement so that 60% of their energy comes from completely renewable sources. You might think that that actually was very costly to the city of Newton, but it wasn't. They actually took advantage of a market-timing procedure and what they perceived as market instability on some of the utility companies, and actually just opened up negotiations during a better window, when they could lock in a better price point. Those are the kinds of opportunities that we need to be attuned to. We're not going to, we're not going to get through to 2030 and hopefully be net zero as quickly as possible just by raising taxes and just trying to kind of bulldoze our way through this. We, as a community, are going to have to search for every single possible efficiency that we can find, opportunity that exists, and creative solution. That's going to take a lot of people in, both in this room and inside of this room. So whether it's talking about our inputs, the energies that we use, or the materials that we use in our buildings, our efficiency and resiliency, the environment around us, preserving our open spaces and making sure that we protect it as much as possible, or our waste, whether that's clarifying recycling or seeking to expand composting opportunities in town, we need to be committed to all of it and moving forward together. So I hope that regardless of which of us gets elected on the board, we've been up here talking about our commitment, but I hope that we still see your commitment on this because we're only one of five. And to be honest, a really big part of being on the select board is listening to community members about what you stand for and what you, and what you're passionate about. It's really loud and clear tonight, and it's been wonderful to address you. I'd be honored to have your vote on May 7. Thank you.
Again, my name is Raul Fernandez, and I'm running for select board. It'd be honored to have your vote. You know, I appreciate Richard's comments about the idea that there are three candidates up here running for a select board seat, that none of us are climate deniers, and none of us are climate delayers. We recognize that this is an urgent issue, that this is a crisis, and that we need to do everything we can as a community and as a set of communities in our area to address these issues. You know, it is time, it is past time that we take this seriously, that we put our foot on both the bike and the electric gas pedal, put that to the metal, and I would even say, the electric scooters as well, if used safely and as directed. We need to really be thinking that this idea of a vision, and thinking in a visionary way on these issues. I will say as well that I am proud to be endorsed by PACs, Brookline PACs, as well as the Alliance for Brookline Schools, that I count as part of, as part of our cabinet, Clint Richmond, the co-chair of the Green Caucus. You can ask others like Scott Englander and Andy Fisher about my candidacy and the conversations that we've had about how important these issues are. I encourage you to do that. This campaign, my campaign, if it's about anything, it's about civic engagement. It's about making sure that we reach the folks who aren't part of the Brookline 500 that are always here and have sat in the seats where you are right now, that we engage them in these kinds of issues, these issues that are existential for us. Issues of racial justice and social justice, economic justice and environmental justice, and that we, we send that signal to people who live in this town that these issues are important, that they're critical, and that we require everyone's involvement to do something about this. I will promise you this, I will promise you that I will listen. When you have something to share and something to say, when something matters to you, whether it be about the environment or the climate crisis or anything else, I will listen. I will promise you this, I will learn. When you suggest that I read an article or watch a movie or something like that, I actually enjoy doing those kinds of things. So if you talk to me about something, I will follow up and I will learn. And I will promise you this, I will take action. I will think critically about these issues. I will try to find the right balance between issues related to the environment, to affordable housing, and to justice in this town, and I will take action. I can promise you that. I look forward to engaging with you one-on-one. I'll stick around after this so we can get a chance to get to know each other and talk a little bit. Once again, my name is Raul Fernandez. I'm a candidate for select board, and I love your vote on Tuesday, May 7. Thank you.
All right. So thanks to everybody. Thanks to everybody who first came. Thank you very much. Number two, excellent questions. Appreciate all the questions. And finally, the candidates, very articulate and well-spoken answers. So just thanks to everybody. Oh, I'm asked to remind special town meeting to deal with Newbury College, 7:00 PM at the high school tomorrow night, so keep that in mind.
See you there. It's going to be a party.
As you leave, as you leave, if you have not already signed in, be sure you sign in with at least name and email address. That's how Cab and/or Biking Brookline will get in touch with you. Thanks to everybody.